Mr. Shi?
Here.
Mrs. Maroni?
Here.
Mrs. Pang?
Yes.
Mrs. Conway?
Here.
Dr. Chen?
Yes.
All present but Mrs. Erko, Mrs. Ward, Mr. Brescher, and Mrs. Patel.
We just got enough five to open up the meeting. So, opening statement, the New Jersey Public Meetings Act was enacted to ensure the right of the public to have advance notice of and to attend the meetings of public bodies at which any business affecting their interest is discussed or acted about. In accordance with the provision of this act, the Edison Board of Education has caused notice of this meeting to be published by having the date, time, and space there posted in the Board of Education and Administrative Offices. Copies of the notices were sent to the Home News Tribune and Star Ledger on July 23, 2019. The public may participate at regular meetings in accordance with bylaws and the applicable state regulations. Today is the joint session, closed session first, then we go to the, then we come out for the public session. So, now then.
Whereas section eight of the Open Public Meetings Act up to 231 Public Laws of 1975 permits the exclusion of the public from meeting in certain circumstances and whereas this public body is of the opinion that such circumstances presently exist, now therefore be resolved by the Board of Education of the Tennessee Methodist as follows: One, the public shall be excluded from discussion of an action upon the herein specified subject matters. Two, the general nature of the subject matter to be discussed as follows: Under attorney-client privilege discussion, we're going to be discussing board policies, litigation brought by former employees, solar projects, township litigation, student matters, Edison Wetlands Association contract, E.T.E.A grievances and unfair labor practices, and personnel matters. Under personnel, we'll be discussing resignations and terminations, retirements, appointments, leaves of absences, changes of status, stipends for paraprofessionals, longevity, substitute staff, Title I funded family night stipends, community-based support programs for Title I, translators for parent-teacher conferences, coaching appointments, coaching changes, and job descriptions. Three, it is anticipated this time that the above stated subject matters shall be made public at such time as the need for nondisclosure no longer exists, and four, this resolution shall take effect immediately.
Could I have a motion? Mrs. Maroni, second. Mrs. Conway.
Dr. Chen?
Yes.
Mrs. Conway?
Yes.
Mrs. Pang?
Yes.
Mrs. Maroni?
Yes.
Mr. Shi?
Yes.
Oh, yes.
So, it's gonna probably take about an hour, so we'll come back and update you guys if we go longer than that. Thank you. So, next up, we have, we're going out to our regular agenda. So, Margaret.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you again for your patience. Ms. Polakowski and Ms. Mahabir will present the 2018-2019 State Standardized Test Results. Last spring, students in grades three through 11 participated in online assessments called NJSLA, or the New Jersey Student Learning Assessments. These assessments are aligned with the New Jersey Student Learning Standards and are designed to determine a student's readiness for college and career. It will help parents and teachers to determine whether or not students have achieved their grade level standards. Thank you, Mrs. Mahabir.
Thank you, I'm welcome, and thank you for saying everything that I was gonna say to start off, so I don't have to say that anymore. This was actually the first year since we changed over from PARC to the NJSLA, and as Mrs. Cantaldi mentioned, they are aligned to the NJSLS. The levels are still the same as they were with PARC, with level four and five being designated as college and career ready. So, at the elementary schools for grade three, oops, excuse me, I should say 2019, grade three through five ELA results overall, we're still exceeding the state in ELA for all three grades, and the same is to be said for math. However, we do know that we still need to do work at individual schools that still need some support, and you'll see that as we move along. So, for ELA grade three, as we looked at the data, we found that there are some standards that we kinda need to focus on, and those for grade three in ELA are talking about central message, moral, or theme, and the explanation and identification of those things through details in the text. So, that's something that we'll be looking at in the curriculum. We're also going to be, as you'll see, for all three of the grades in ELA, we've been able to provide some extra support for students who may need it in extended day programs at certain schools, so we're pleased to be able to be able to do that this year. For grade four, we had the same kind of thing, actually, so something that we need to build upon, again, main idea, theme, and also summarize and how it's supported by details. Also, we probably need to work on explanation of events in historical scientific text and why things happened. For ELA grade five, again, the same thing is seen, a statement of the theme in text, and additionally, how characters respond or reflect on those, and integration of several texts together, the comparison of stories, approaches to theme and topic as well. So, all things that we need to take a look at the curriculum and see where we can beef it up. For math, we noticed a couple of things across all three grade levels. One of the things that stuck out to us is that fractions were something that we need to work on a little bit more, and something interesting which is being fulfilled by our current new math program, which is thinking and explaining beyond the algorithm, but since it is our first year doing this program, we are still working on that. In grade four, again, it was additionally, it was with word problems, multi-step word problems, fractions, and again, talking about the conceptual rather than just the computational. In grade five, again, it came up with fractions as well, and also, the idea of critical thinking and using visualization. So, some of the things that we're doing, oops, sorry, I skipped over that one, I guess. So, some of the things that we're kind of putting in place additionally to the curriculum is we know we have to do professional development for our teachers, and we have started on that path. We've adopted a new resource called Exact Path for Math, which helps individualize for the students to remediate and to extend both. We added instructional coaches this year, which I'm very pleased to have, and they are working, they have been working tirelessly with teachers in the classrooms, modeling, helping plan, and for teachers to understand data. On top of that, we are also going to be doing more data work on our PD day at the elementary level, so that we can take a look again where the deficiencies might lie, and we can work with teachers on how to address those. The other thing that we're going to add in is to make sure that we're exposing students to the kinds of questions they might experience, and prepare them for those, so they have a little bit more regular practice with that. And, right, and as I mentioned, also checking in on the pacing of what we're doing as well, especially for math, to make sure we're getting to all those units that we need to get to. So, this slide and the next several slides, and Mrs. Palakowski will take over for me in just a second, are actually three through 10. So, these are the different subgroups we look at as well, to see where we need to help students, and also, again, to kind of beef up our curriculum and find out what extra supports we can give the students. You can see that over the four years, it stayed pretty stable, so we do need to make growth in some areas. And this is also subgroups of male and female for language arts. And finally, by program, so there's free and reduced lunch gifted, students with 504s, LEP stands for Limited English Proficiency, Special Education, and General Ed, and all of those scores are also included in the scores you saw previously, in the percentages. These are just broken up by subgroup. And with that, I'm gonna hand it over to Mr. Palakowski.
Good evening. So, yeah, so this goes now to the math, the proficiency in math, just as was explained, how it's broken down, we can see where we need to make some changes. Here's by gender, and it's so nice, see, the boys and girls are neck and neck in math. So, that's great. And then by program, and you can see the limited English proficiency, we're so happy to have Mr. Lad with us now, who has a strong background here, and he's going to be helping us help teachers, help students. Especially in math, these students often know the math and struggle with the language piece, so we need to help the teachers support these kids and get them to do well. So, we'll be working on all of our groups to improve them. This just lets us know that the science results are not in yet, they're not in for the state at all, they're telling us possibly December, but they do not count for anything as far as graduation, or anything in particular for the district. Here are our English scores for grade six, and we're gonna be looking at, you can see the orange band is the Edison percentage, and the state is the one above it, the goldish yellow, and in the first three, we always want Edison to have a lower percentage, okay, because that means the students performed well. So, those three, we want less than the state, meaning we have fewer kids that did not meet or are only partially meeting. And when we look at the fourth one, exceeded, met expectations and exceeded, now, especially the last one, we want higher, because our students are performing well, and you can see that as an average, 76% met or exceeded the standards over the state's 56%. So, Edison often does well, always does well, and exceeds the state, in this particular case, by 20 points. In the seventh grade, you can see also, again, exceeded the state, 81% over the 63 for the state. Not that we settle for that, obviously, we're always looking to improve, we want all of our students, we wanna see that to be 100%, get it as close to 100%, keep working toward 100% each year. And you can see with the ELA grade eight, we are still exceeding the state, but we can also see that there are some areas where we'd like to see those percentages increased. Again, working with some of our populations, our subgroups, we will make that happen. As Ms. Beninder mentioned, we are also adding programs for the students after school, helping them with their skills, very focused. This test allows us to see exactly which students need the help, what standards they need to improve on, and then we can be very focused in helping them get to the goal that we're looking for and help them achieve. In math, back, sorry, back to grade six math, again, Edison has 62% of the students meeting or exceeding expectations. Obviously, we'd like to see that increase. We can identify the students that need the extra support. This was a new curriculum last year, so again, as mentioned before, we're using staff development to help the teachers also, identify these students, find the strategies that really meet their needs, and will help them meet or exceed expectations. In grade seven, this is the Algebra I student, so the student, there are some seventh graders who moved to Algebra I. These are the remaining students, 55% exceeded or met the expectations, again, above the state, not that we're settling there. We are working on the seventh grade, the middle school principals are working with the interventionists, very focused on this group, to make sure that they get them prepared for the next level, so we can easily identify the students and the standards that they need to meet, so that we can get that 55% up higher. And then in the eighth grade, now you have the Algebra I and the geometry students are not included in this group, there are about 455 students in the middle schools that are in this particular group, and you can see that for the first time, we are under the state percentages. And these are the students, again, that we will be working with as far as, very targeted, very focused on what do we need to do, help the teachers with staff development, to get them to move to the met expectations or exceeded expectations. So, they will be, these particular kids are our focus group in the high school this year, and then we'll work with the seventh graders from last year that are in the eighth grade now, those identified by last year's test, to focus on them as well, with working with the interventionists and the after-school programs. All right, so now we look at the high school, and here are the new graduation requirements. So, it's ELA 10 and Algebra I, and then if for some reason the students do not meet those expectations, there are several ways for them to do it, through the SAT, ACT, different standardized tests, and if not, the portfolio appeal, and we always get 100% of the students to meet one of those standards. We had 100% meet the portfolio last year. So, here are Algebra I students. So, now, this is the students that are in Algebra I in the high school, but also the seventh graders and eighth graders that were in Algebra I in the middle school. So, you can see that 72% of them have met or exceeded expectations, so they have already met the Algebra I graduation requirement. So, that's almost everyone in those classes in the middle school, and then the high school kids, these are, again, the focus kids that came up from the eighth grade the year before that were the focus group. So, we'll be working with them very closely with programs and interventionists. And then, oh, sorry, geometry, look at that, 100% of our geometry students have already met the graduation requirements, and they're in eighth grade, okay? And then 80% overall for the district have already met the graduation, and with geometry, it is the three, four, or the five that count for graduation requirements, not just the met expectations and exceeded. But again, not that we're settling, we're gonna keep pushing to get that 80% much higher. Algebra II, again, scoring a three, four, or five meets the graduation requirement, and you can see that 96% of our students have done that. And this was a focus group from the year before, because of the scores and just the work that they did with the staff development with the teachers, and then the teachers working together to focus on the needs of the students, and there's the result because of their hard work, way above the state when it comes to Algebra II, very high scores. Grade nine, 79%, again, exceeding the state, but we wanna do a much better job of getting closer to 100% there, so that when they do get to the 10th grade, this is the one that matters for graduation, we have 82% of them have already met the requirement for graduation, and now we know the 18%, we need to work with them as a focus group with the programs after school and any of the other tests, and the teachers work very closely with them, preparing them to do anything that they need to do, to make sure that by senior year, they have met the graduation requirements. Again, the science scores for the high school, we do not have the results, hopefully by December, we'll have those. So, AP students, you can see in both schools, Edison did a great job there this year of increasing from 358 to 404, but more and more students are taking the AP tests, and there it is. The number of subjects, we give 28, total exams, 2609, the number of students taking the exams, 1259, and the great news is the percentage. So, even though more students are taking the tests, they are maintaining that three, and that's what counts for the college credit. So, even though more students are in the classes, they are maintaining their scores. And this just gives you a general idea of how much we, how Edison does compared to the state and globally. The students do an extremely good job in the tests, and obviously, the teachers do a fabulous job of preparing them, all right? SAT participation, JP Stevens, you have about 90% in Edison High, 80%, but you can see that either maintained or increased over time. And there are the scores, I'm sorry, and there you could see the steady increase. So, yes, the state kind of fluctuates up and down, up and down, a little bit of an increase, but the Edison students have consistently increased their scores over the years, and exceed the state in almost every, in every year of both categories. And that's just a different representation of the same information. That's the four-year math, and there's the four-year reading. And the ACT is a standardized test that students may take, some take it in addition to the SAT, some take it instead of the SAT. It's another test that will help with college applications, and you can see that there's a decrease this, last year, and actually, this year, and that's because fewer colleges are looking at the SAT and ACT. I just read an article where it's one in four, because they believe the students are at a disadvantage. So, by not looking at SAT and ACT, they feel they are leveling the playing field for all students. So, you're gonna see a little bit of a decrease with those as the years go on. But again, anytime Edison students take a test, they are well-prepared, and you can see that the score was maintained well above the state, and that 70% of the students are ready for college coursework according to this, based, compared to the 41% for the state. And that's a composite score, it's in English, math, science, reasoning, and reading all together for a total on the ACT participation. Thank you.
Thank you. I just have a very quick question from the very beginning, this is Mahabir. These are valid scores, is that the total number of kids who took this test, or?
Yes.
Okay. That's it, just wanted to clear. Any other board members, questions? All right, so we move on.
Thank you, Mrs. Mahabir, Mrs. Polakowski, very much for your time in preparing that presentation. It's a lot of information to process and digest, and we thank you.
Our kids did pretty well, too, so I'd like to see that 100%.
That's our goal.
Okay, so, reservation, okay, so Margaret, can you walk us through the remaining items, and we'll move to Dan?
I'd be happy to, Mr. Shi. Good evening again. This evening, there are a number of items. Under administration, board policy revisions. Periodically, the board is required to update existing policies to be in line with New Jersey Administrative Code and/or legislation. Tonight, there are 24 policies up for a first reading, and 11 policies up for a second reading. As you can see, Mrs. Falgone Patel and the Policy Committee have been very busy, and we thank them for their diligence and their time. The board was provided with information for the Week of Respect that occurred from October 7th to the 11th. Specifically, last June, teams from each building came together to work on a district-wide initiative called Character Day on September 27th, and Unplugged Day on October 7th. Character Day is an annual event that unites millions of people in schools, companies, and homes to develop and deepen their character, to help build strengths like empathy, grit, gratitude, and leadership. Why, you may ask? Because character development leads not only to school and career success, but also to stronger, more engaged individuals and a more just world. Last year, over 4 million people across 200,000 groups in 125 countries and all 50 states participated in Character Day. So, this year, Character Day focused on relationships between character and technology. We thought it would be a wise decision to show children the proper use of technology and what not to do. So, how does technology enhance our character development? How does turning off the screens enhance our character? We encourage students and families, as well as teachers, on October 7th to go unplugged, which meant that there was no tech in the classrooms or work relating to tech sent home. There's also a School Violence Awareness Week during the month of October. The board received activities that are gonna occur during the week of October 21st through 25th. Some of these activities include things like Peace Week, Keep Calm, and Carry On Projects, as well as singing songs with messages of respect, kindness, and resilience every morning. Character at assemblies in the schools will encourage tolerance, respect, and kindness. These are perfect themes to start off any school year. I'm also very proud to share with everyone that the students at Marshall School will be participating in a Wingman instructional program next week at the New Jersey School Board's workshop. Were you gonna speak to that a little bit, Beth?
Yeah.
Okay, I won't belabor it much more, but they will demonstrate student-based interactions to create a culture of acceptance and inclusion for board members and superintendents across the state of New Jersey. Coming up in November, before our next meeting, is the American Education Week proclamation. The board has a resolution to designate the week as American Education Week. That resolution reads as follows: Whereas America's schools are the backbone of our democracy, providing each new generation with the tools to maintain our nation's precious values of freedom, civility, and equality; and whereas schools are the primary influence in children's lives, aside from their families; and whereas, by equipping young Americans with both practical skills and broader intellectual abilities, schools give them hope for and access to a productive future; and whereas, schools are community linchpins, bringing together adults, children, educators, volunteers, business leaders, and elected officials in a common enterprise; and whereas, education employees, be they custodians, maintenance workers, secretaries, teacher aides, teachers, bus drivers, or librarians, or paraprofessionals, work tirelessly to serve our children and communities with care and professionalism; and whereas, there is nothing more crucial to the health and future of our nation than education, now therefore be it resolved that the Edison Board of Ed hereby proclaims November 18th to the 22nd as the 98th Annual Observance of American Education Week. Very worthwhile proclamation. Under curriculum and instruction, there are five field trips, which include a political science club trip, cheerleaders, high school choir, and FCC LA trips. Under professional development, there's quite a bit of documentation for staff members to attend out-of-district events. Under pupil and special services topic, we have several out-of-district placements. There are several terminated placements, there's change of placements for several students, suspended placement and new transfers in are identified on the report for the board to review. And under professional services, there are additional resources for students regarding speech evaluation and audiology consultation services that are up for board approval. I'd also like to make mention of a letter that was sent out today to the board, as well as to parents, regarding an incident, and I thought it was important enough, I see our friends from Chartwell's are here as well, someone had posted something on Facebook, and it was filled with misinformation. So, to set the record straight, on Monday, October 14th, it was brought to the district's attention that a parent posted on their Facebook a video in which a Cocoa Puffs breakfast bar was taken from her daughter's backpack, and the breakfast bar had some mold. She claimed that the bar was provided to her daughter by our food service vendor, Chartwell's. Here are the facts of the matter. Chartwell's provided a Cocoa Puffs breakfast bar to the students for breakfast on one day and one day only, and that was September 12th, 2019, to see whether or not the students enjoyed them or not. It was a trial. The breakfast bar at the schools on September 12th were kept frozen and defrosted prior to serving because it contained cream cheese and required refrigeration. The package clearly stated that it should be consumed within six hours after it was defrosted and was ready to be served. defrosted and was ready to be served. The expiration date on the package was January 2020. Evidently, the elementary student didn't finish her breakfast and put the breakfast bar in her backpack. The video states that the mother emptied her daughter's backpack on Saturday, October 12th, 2019, 30 days after it was served. Another daughter took the breakfast bar from a bin where the mom keeps all the snacks for the house. We believe that occurred on Sunday, and that was when the mother noticed mold growing on the bar. She then posted the video on her Facebook page accusing Chartwell's of serving food that is moldy to our students. So several items that need to be addressed in order to further clarify this issue is that staff is advised that no food should be taken home from the schools. Students who elect not to eat an item are to place it on a share table. Once it is removed from the schools and out of the district control, we have no way of monitoring the food for temperature or expiration dates. The breakfast bar was left in the daughter's backpack for a month before it was found, and therefore, parents are indeed reminded to check their children's backpacks at least once a week for any important information sent from schools and to remove any outdated food. The district wanted to eliminate any miscommunication and ensure that the breakfast bar was handled correctly by Chartwell's staff on September 12th, 2019, and served to our students well within the six-hour timeframe listed on the package. Thank you, Mr. Shi.
Thank you. So Dan?
All right. First item is the investment report. For the month of September, we've got interest in the amount of $60,949, bringing our total for the year up to $173,443. Then you, the next six pages are the financial report for the month of August, and then we'll get into the resolutions, the actual resolutions. The first one is the acceptance of the Consolidated Monitoring Corrective Action Plan. Those the state sent in, there were four auditors here for about three days. They went through all of our federal grants with a fine-tooth comb. We got about $5 million in total federal monies between IDEA, Title I, II, III, and IV. So they went through everything regarding those, including our programs and our finances and everything else, and they came up with 27 findings. You have a copy, everybody has a copy of the actual audit themselves and the corrective action plan that the district came up with. In most cases, it's just information that has gone to the parents, and some say, in some cases, we weren't able to come up with the, the actual document. And if we couldn't come up with the document, they wrote us up for not having the document. So you'll see that in every instance, we came up with a corrective action plan that we're going to send to the state. This will be posted on our website as it's required by law. Financially, there were several findings of expenditures that they felt were not apropos for that grant. Out of the $5 million, they came up with about $45,000 worth of expenditures that they want us to reverse from the grant and charge back to our budget, which you'll see in the, in the corrective action plan itself. So we'd like to have the board approve this corrective action plan so we can submit it to the state, which is a requirement, so we can get the, get it set up for the timeline. We'll get the approval from the state once they receive it. They review it, and then they'll say to us if the corrective action is adequate or not. And I'm sure that it will be, because in most cases, they gave us what they recommended as the corrective action plan, and we followed almost everything to the letter. Item number two, we had a bid for food service equipment repairs. We've had, we have a lot of equipment. We have over 200 different pieces of equipment in our kitchens. A lot of them are, some are original to the schools, but we spent quite a bit of money in maintaining those. So we put a bid out, and Able Mechanical came in at a, for preventive maintenance for all the equipment. Twice a year, they'll do an inspection and do repairs and clean the coils and all the kind of stuff that normally when they come in and do repairs, that's mostly the things that are not being done, is cleaning toy coils and the gaskets that need to be replaced, things like that. So for the total amount of $56,000 for preventive maintenance, and for any repairs that are not covered by the PM, it'll be $120 an hour, and the cost would, they get their discounted costs, obviously, because that's their business. So the parts will be cost plus 35. We'd like to have that approved for tonight. We have one part of our health premiums that don't come up in July. They will starting next year, but we have the DOS Dental Organization, Dental Services, DSO, Dental Services Organization. This is one of our, it's actually, it's an alternate to our current dental programs through Blue Cross Blue Shield. But the only thing was, the premiums are a lot less, and there's no copay, no deductibles, but you have to go to Eastern Dental. And we don't have a lot of people that are in it, but, and I'm one, I am in it, but, and it's, I go to, I went there anyway, so it didn't make any difference to me. But they, they had their increases in their premiums in October. So the increases, as you can see, it's $32 a month for one party, for two parties, $62, and three party or more, it's $107. It was an increase of about 5%, and this is, this is about half of what we pay to Blue Cross. But Blue Cross can go to any, with this one, you have to go to Eastern Dental, so. So we'd like to have that approved tonight. We also have some security aid purchases from non-public schools that we'd like to have approved. There's two listed here, and we also have two from the non-public technology monies we'd like to have approved also. There's a small list of obsolete items from three schools, four schools. Then we had the bill list for $29,649,942. I had a call from several, some of the board members about some of the things on here. And the reason why it's so big is because, if you remember, when we made the change to Blue Cross, we had some questions about the bills, about, we wanted to make sure it was accurate. So we, we went three months without paying them anything. So we, we had to pay them $6.4 million in September because we were behind on our, on our premiums, but we wanted to make sure it was accurate before we paid anything. So that's why it's up as high as 29, normally, in the lower 20s. Then we have a copy of the transportation report. It's very lengthy, as you can see, because this is all of the routes that were renewed between Dapper and Barker and all of the vendors we deal with, with an increase of 1.545%. The state tells us every year, if we can, if we want to renew, we're maxed out at whatever this CPI is. And last year, they told us 1.45. So all of the vendors took the 1.45. These are the updated numbers with the 1.45 increase. So we'd like to have that approved also. And then I do have one item that's not on the agenda that we just discussed recently. We just talked about it in closed session, actually. The Edison Public Schools Custodians and Maintenance Association, Custodians Unit, wants to know if the board would be, consider a sidebar agreement. In our current contract with custodians, in order to be hired as a custodian, you have to have a black seal when you're hired. We used to have in the old contract, you had 18 months to get it, but back in the early 2000s, I know Dr. Praro wanted to have them have it already. We're having some problems getting some. We have five vacancies right now. We're having trouble filling them with black seal people. So what we'd like to do is have a sidebar agreement to their current contract that would give them up to 12 months to get it. If they don't have it in 12 months, they will be terminated, and they'll know that going in. But if the board's, and we did discuss that, so if the board's okay with that, I'd like to add that to my finance agenda tonight for approval. Okay? And that concludes our report, Mr. Shi.
Okay, thank you. Anything about the board secretary report or?
The board secretary report, that's the August, August financials, just like we do every month.
Okay. All right. So before we open up for public comments on the resolutions, there's a slight change on the personnel agenda you guys already received when we were in the discussion. The, we're going to table the second personnel on the, on the agenda. Dario Brizowski. We're going to table that, that appointment, that, that item, okay? So. All right, with that said, so public comments on resolutions only.
Hi, Maria Orchid, 83, Jefferson. I just want to invite everybody, we're going to have a block party at the Clara Barton.
We'll do it later. Resolution. See now for resolution. So we're going to move on for the board members to vote on these items. So first, the, I always do this separately, the personnel agenda. Can I have a motion? Okay, Mr. Brescher, second. Mrs. Maroni.
Dr. Chen?
Yes.
Mrs. Conway?
Yes.
Mrs. Patel?
Yes.
Mr. Brescher?
Yes.
Mrs. Peng?
Yes.
Mrs. Maroni?
Yes.
Mr. Shi?
Yes.
Oh, yes.
Next, all the remaining items, administration, curriculum instructions, pupil service, and the finance resolution with the new sidebar that was added. Okay? The remaining items. Can I have a motion on that? Okay, Mr. Brescher, second. Okay, Mrs. Conway.
Dr. Chen?
Yes.
Mrs. Conway?
Yes.
Mr. Patel?
Yes.
Mr. Brescher?
Yes.
Mrs. Peng?
Yes.
Mrs. Maroni?
Yes.
Mr. Shi?
Yes.
Oh, yes.
All right, so move on, we have three committee reports.
Get the minutes.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry. Okay. All right. So approval of the minutes on September 18th and September 23rd.
And the board secretary.
And the board secretary report. Okay, can I have a motion on that? Okay, Mrs. Patel, second. Okay, Mrs. Conway.
Dr. Chen?
Yes.
Mrs. Conway?
Yes.
Mrs. Patel?
Yes.
Mr. Brescher?
Yes.
Mrs. Peng?
Yes.
Mrs. Maroni?
Yes.
Mr. Shi?
Yes.
Oh, yes.
All right, and now we go to the committees. Community Relations Committee, Mrs. Maroni.
The Community Relations Committee has been extremely busy. We had two meetings, one on October 3rd and the other on the 10th. So on October 3rd, in attendance were Beth Maroni, Richard Brescher, Elizabeth Conway, Gail Polakowski, Daniel Mashad, Jean Parentoni, Alicia Peluso, and Marcus Rosenau from SSP Architects. Ms. Peluso discussed three summers creative, building elevations of different additions and the fronts and the sides of the buildings. So at Edison High School, the, they showed us a mock-up of what it's going to look like. And at Edison High, there's going to be a canopy over the doors. It's a whole new look, and it's, it's very pretty. It's going to be modified somewhat, but it's really nice-looking. So we looked at three renderings, and we chose elements from the drawings number two and number three to be used in the final design. And JP Stevens needs a lot more classrooms. The entrance there will basically stay the same. JP will go to a three-story building so as not to take away too much parking. There will be a secondary entrance for sports and co-curricular activities. Passing time is going to be challenging, and air conditioning will only be in the new building. Images of renovated space, the auditorium needs to be air-conditioned, new lighting, but will not be made any larger. It needs to be more functional, comfortable, safer, and handicapped accessible. Typical classroom layouts, for flexibility, there are going to be different configurations, and also the stage is going to be refurbished. Ms. Peluso provided handouts and a video. They have already put together a lot of the components for the campaign. We picked a design for the campaign, and there will be school-specific handouts that will be coming soon. So the, the logo for the campaign is A Brighter Edison. It's got a light bulb, very nice. Our website will contain relevant district information. The committee felt that questions should be fielded in specific locations, someone in central office, and the October 16th and November 20th board meetings where questions will be fielded on new construction. The committee needs to schedule an information session, scheduling two public meetings for the bond referendum to be held at the high schools. Informational sessions Tuesday, October 29th, and Wednesday, October 30th. One informational session, a general meeting, and the committee will put together further timeline. Election voting time is 6:00 AM to 8:00 PM. And then this is a week later. In attendance, Beth Maroni, Richard Brescher, Elizabeth Conway, Jerry Shi, Margaret Cantaldi, Daniel Mashad, Jean Parentoni, Alicia Peluso, and Marcus Rosenau from SSP Architects. The goal was to provide a status update on current projects and get approvals on the next step. Discussion, will senior citizens be exempt from tax increase? If a senior has done the senior rate freeze application and has been approved, the tax assessor has said that seniors will, will not be exempt, but seniors could possibly get reimbursed if they meet the qualifications. That's a little confusing, I know. Handouts will be ready on October 16th for the presidents of the PTA, PTOs. They will include the referendum, quick facts on the front, information pertinent to the schools which are slated for additions if the referendum passes on the back of the flyer. Mr. Mashad has composed a letter to be sent to the Edison School District community, reminding them to vote on December 10th regarding the question of the referendum. Currently, there are 16,300-plus students. FES capacity is 11,303. Thus, using the state formula, there are currently 5,000 Edison students currently without a seat. Therefore, there is an urgency to passing this bond. Ms. Peluso showed graphs of projected enrollments at all the schools slated for additions and renovations, as well as a graph of high school projections. This information will be distributed throughout the district. The district needs to get community feedback on the flyers being sent out, and a press release is being prepared for October 16th. Important dates moving forward, October 21st to 24th, there are going to be two PTO meetings run by Ms. Cantaldi and Jen Fisher. October 29th, a referendum information session, the same thing on October 30th. On November 15th, absent valentines are available. November 16th is the end date for voter registration. November 20th, Board of Education Caucus meeting. December 3rd, information session at two high schools, and December 10th, the referendum vote. The committee did a tour of, did a tour for us on the website so we could see what it looked like, and the website is abrighteredison.com. The committee saw the updated renderings of JP Stevens High School and Edison High School that were created based on the suggestions made by the committee at the last meeting. Discussions ensued on which image will be best to put on the website. A discussion was held as to whom will appear in the video explaining why the referendum is crucial. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Next up is the CTC Committee. Mrs. Peng?
Yeah. The Curriculum and Technology Committee met, no, September 13th, 2019, at Ed Center at 12 o'clock.
Closer.
Is it?
Pull closer.
Okay. This is better?
Yep.
In attendance is Beth Maroni, Una Chen, Shannon Peng, Elizabeth Conway, Gail Polowski, and Bernina Mahbier. We first discussed the curriculum revisions. These curriculum were, was written and revised over the summer for the following courses and was, were approved at the September 23rd meeting, including Algebra I, Algebra II Honors, Accelerated Academic, Geometry Honors, Accelerated Academic, Pre-Calculus Honors, Accelerated Academic, Applied Calculus, Integrated Math A, and TV Production II. The district is also offer all teachers in the district for $20 per teacher. King University courses, one is teaching the Holocaust, the other is teaching the Prejudice Reduction. We also set the PSAT for high school, which is, which was taken today, October 16th, and also PSAT 8. Date is December 11th, and this is PSAT 8/9 is for eighth graders only. And I know a lot of parents might be interested in this, and we sent out an email earlier in September about the dates. But in case you missed, the date is December 11th, and this test, the score, the result of this test is used as one of the criteria in the grouping procedure to determine the next year's placement in ninth grade. So this is kind of important. So we also dis- So, we also discussed the Middlesex County College High School Scholar Program. We have a new contract with dual enrollment. So, basically, high school students are eligible to earn MCC college credit for some specific course in math, science, and social studies. These college credits is transferable to all in-state and most of the out-state colleges and universities. Also discussed our Mammoth Ocean Educational Service Commission, online services. These are some new contracts the district has with online courses used for some home instructions. Lastly, we discussed the ELA pilot upgrade, update. This is the elementary school new ELA book. Teachers are implementing, already implementing the programs. We discussed the timeline for the PD and the rollout also. Meeting was adjourned about one o'clock. That's it, thank you.
Okay, next up, Policy Committee, Mrs. Patel.
The Policy Committee met twice, the first time on September twenty-seventh at one PM at the Ed Center. In attendance were myself, Richard Brecher, Teresa Ward, Yuna Chen, Margaret Cantaldi, Ramon Rivera, and Patrick Cassin. The committee discussed briefly some issues related to vaping and the types of devices that may be available to us to detect vaping and bullying in schools. In the process of looking into the district's policy on student smoking, we discovered that some of the policies on the board's website were not all up to date. So, the committee decided to look further into all the district's policies to see which ones needed to be updated and additionally, look into how Strauss S. May conducts their audits of our policies. Furthermore, the committee discussed how to handle getting the policies posted online once the board approves them and how to make this process better. The committee spent the remainder of the meeting talking about additionally, additional mandated policies for review and discuss updating the current policy on professional services to provide more clarity and transparency on how professional service contracts are awarded, and spent some time talking about a policy that would encourage more Edison residents to be hired in our district. The next time the Policy Committee met was on October seventh at ten AM. In attendance were myself, Richard Brecher, Teresa Ward, and Yuna Chen. The committee went over more mandated policies that needed updating. The committee also discussed the residency policy, professional services policy, and the board's policy of rental of the facilities, and whether or not we would like to continue to rent out our turf fields. Furthermore, the committee discussed that the rental rates of our facility should be looked into by the Finance and Facilities Committee. The meeting adjourned at eleven-ten PM.
Thank you. The upcoming meetings, next month, we're going to go back to our two-meeting set. The caucus meeting will be on November twentieth, seven o'clock here. And the public meeting will be November twenty-fifth, seven PM at JP Stevens. Now, we're open for board member comments. Yes, Mrs. Maroni?
Good evening. So, as Mrs. Cantaldi began to tell you, this coming Tuesday, we are expecting the student leaders, the wingmen from John Marshall School, who was the first school trained in Edison a year ago, and they are coming to Atlantic City, where they will be on the floor of the convention hall, and they will be doing wingman activities, some of the very basic ones, with the superintendents and principals who come to the convention. The kids are ready to go, the buses are ordered, the lunches are taken care of. Like, I have to say, Principal Amy Hoffman has done an outstanding job in, you know, dotting all the i's and crossing all the t's. We are so excited. This is a big deal for the kids to be coming to Atlantic City. Ian himself will be giving the keynote address at convention on Wednesday morning at eleven o'clock, which is also very exciting. And a week and a half ago, we did our training at Woodrow Wilson Middle School. So, this is how much the wingman program has caught on now. A hundred and forty-one students applied to be in the program. And we could only take thirty-two. We're trying to find other ways to incorporate all the others who want to be a part of the program. Now, we're only in the second year of the program, and right now, we have about thirty schools in New Jersey. Once the program is presented at convention next Wednesday, we anticipate that we will be bombarded by superintendents from all over the state. So, over the summer, we trained thirty new trainers. And by the way, they're all retired teachers, superintendents. Patty Catoya is one of the trainers, and she helped us train at Woodrow Wilson last week, and it was really funny, because I have the kids call me Ms. Beth. And so, when she met with the kids, she said to them, "Well, you know who I am. Oh, yeah, Ms. Catoya, Ms. Catoya." She said, "Well, now you can call me Ms. Patty." And this, this group at Woodrow, there were thirty-two kids. And I will tell you, that is a big bunch of students. They usually get chatty in the afternoons and start like drifting off a little bit. This group paid attention from the first minute till the end of the day. They are remarkable, and I'm so excited that the program is doing this well in its second year. Thank you.
Any other board members? Mrs. Conway?
I just wanted to let you know I had a great weekend, starting off with Friday night. I went to Edison High School, and I watched Father of the Bride, and it was just so good, and I just got so excited. One of my former students that I taught in fifth grade was one of the main characters, so I had to hang around to say hi, and when he saw me, it was like, "You came?" So, he was really excited, and it was fabulous. It was really fabulous. On Saturday, I went to the JP Stevens Band Festival, and as usual, Edison High School and JP Stevens are just a phenomenal presentation to everyone. This is all new to me, because none of my students, not, none of my students, my children were involved in band, and Mrs. Budowsky actually introduced me to going to band festivals, and now, I was even there by myself on Saturday night. So, they are so fabulous. And if any of it comes up, even if you're not involved with a band or a high school, you have to go. It's just unbelievable. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other board members? Yeah, Mr. Brecher?
I'd just like to see if the public can come out and support our girls' volleyball over at JP Stevens. It looks like they're having a phenomenal year this year. I think they're twenty and oh at present time. I mean, that's a pretty impressive record. They got a couple games left, and I think a conference that's coming up. But, yeah, I'd recommend everybody stop by and, you know, give them the support that they deserve, because that's a pretty impressive record in my book there. Thank you.
That's it? Okay, so, yes, anybody else? All right, I'd like to take this opportunity to congratulate Mr. Frank Rugio, he's sitting over there. He just got appointed. Dr. Rugio, I'm sorry. He just got appointed as the supervisor for secondary word language, you know, in the, in our district. He worked in our district before, and welcome back, and looking forward to your leadership to move our, you know, high school, you know, the secondary word language program to another level. Thank you very much. Second, I'd like to congratulate Mrs. Maroni, who became a grandmother.
Thank you, Jerry. A nine-pound, ten-ounce baby girl named Lily carried wind to my daughter Shauna, who is five feet tall, and how the hell she carried a nine-pound, ten-ounce baby, we don't know. And she's, everybody's doing very well. Thank you so much, Jerry. That was very kind of you.
Just a couple of quick items. I want to provide an update. The, Mrs. Maroni mentioned about the Community Relations Committee, they had a meeting, a couple meetings to talk about the bond referendum. I just wanted to let everybody know that we have a website. It is target to be released this Friday. So, once, we're just in the final phase to make sure everything we said is by the law and just double-check. So, the target release date is the, this Friday. Once that's released, we'll be communicating to the community about our website. There are a lot of useful information there about the referendum, frequent asked questions, some details about the breakdown of costs of each schools and so on, a lot of good information on why we need to do this, okay? You know, why we need to do this, actually, I have the enrollment report. I just did a quick calculation for the kids that's in the fifth, sixth, and seventh, eighth grades, okay? These are the kids in the next four years will be moving into our high schools. So, the number of students that will be moving over to high school in the next four years, all these kids, is five thousand three hundred eighty-four, okay? So, that's nine hundred, it's five hundred ninety-six more students than we have right now, okay? Close to six hundred students will come in the next four years. So, that tells you that, you know, how urgent that we need the referendum to alleviate these, the overcrowding issue. These are the kids that's already in the system. I'm not talking about the kids who are potentially coming in with, you know, the new homeowners and so on. So, that's very important, that those are the facts. The other thing that I think a lot of people here are probably interested is the superintendent search, okay? So, we are, we have a couple meetings in the past, this week and last week. We have our finalists already. We're just in the final stage of going through the process. I hope that if everything goes smooth, I hope we can announce at the next meeting, but we have to go through the process to make everything, you know, to be sure. This is something that, you know, the committee has been waiting for, and it just, it's coming. So, the other thing is, you know, with all these students, I looked at the enrollment report, and we did have the, the system, we upgraded the system to have annual verification to verify the students, they're still legitimate to enroll in the Edison Public Schools. So, I just want to find out where we are with this annual verification. That's something Mrs. Pang's been pushing forward to get this done. Are we ready to start that, or?
I don't have an answer for you, but I will get one.
Okay, all right. Yeah, so with these, number of kids are coming in, moving into the high schools, we actually need to do this to make sure that the kids who are in the system are actually legit, and they're not, you know, enrolled in the first grade and second grade and then move out, and they're still in our system. So, this process will need them to provide certain documents to make sure they're still here, okay? So, that's the end of the board member comments. I see a lot of parents with young kids here. So, I know you guys have school tomorrow. If any of the parents who has questions, you guys please go first, so you can, you know, let the kid, you can take the kids home earlier. Hope you guys do not mind, let them go first, class tomorrow. Yes?
Yep.
Yeah, go ahead. Any questions?
No.
No?
Okay.
No questions? Okay. All right, now we are open for public comments. So, yes, Jeff?
Good evening. Jeff Bowden, Two Ethel Road, ETA president. I just wanted to thank the board for once again allowing us to have our trunk-or-treat at Menlo Park School. Also like to thank Mrs. Cantaldi for her support with our flyers and everything else. And I'd like to invite the entire community on Sunday, October twenty-seventh, between twelve and three PM to Menlo Park School for a trunk-or-treat for all the kids of Edison. And if you've been there in the past, you know we sometimes get thousands of children and their families there. It's a great time for the grandparents to come, along with all the family members. We're hoping it's a great weather day, and we'll keep our fingers crossed there is no inclement weather day, so it's a one-shot deal here.
You're a weatherman, so.
Last year, we had the inclement weather day, I think, and it was okay. Year before, it was okay, but, you know, we hope for a perfect day. So, we hope to get thousands of kids there. We will also be hosting a table for the referendum. I've partnered with NJA. They're creating some flyers for us to give details of the referendum, so we hope that you make a stop at that table also, and it should be a great day. So, twelve to three o'clock, Menlo Park, Sunday, October twenty-seventh. And I'd like to congratulate and thank Mr. Ross, who the Principals and Supervisors Association will be making their first visit to this event.
Oh, okay. More candies. All right. Okay, so, yes?
I just wanted to say that James Monroe had their trunk-or-treat last Friday, and I went, and I was very impressed. I didn't even know what happened at one of these, and they had a massive food truck, bouncy houses, a lot of people that were there. I thought it was very, very great event.
That was a Friday afternoon, right?
Friday evening.
Evening, okay.
Evening, evening.
Okay. All right. All right, Mark?
Margot Harris, forty-three, Oak Hills Road. I'm here tonight before this board on which I proudly served from 2012 to 2016 to discuss an event that took place at the Committee of the Whole hearing at Town Hall on Wednesday, October second. This committee, which is comprised of our Edison Town Councilman, the council attorney, and the attorney.
Excuse me, I'm going to interrupt your comment here, and just remind you and the public that the purpose of public comment here at the board meeting is to discuss educational issues pertaining to the board. It's not to discuss any other matters outside of this, municipal matters. This committee of the whole, which has to do with a municipal council issue concerning a political issue and what's been reported in the papers, it's not appropriate to deliver that comment here, and we're not going to permit that, those comments related to the Committee of the Whole unless there's some educational issue that you want to discuss. This is not the appropriate forum.
Mr. Rivera, I am here to clear my name from comments that were made by Mr. Shi at this, at this meeting, and I've had no other recourse in which to do this, based on what he was reading off of a Facebook post. And I have no other venue in which to be able to, to do this. And since this, these comments were made by Mr. Shi in a public setting and were seen by whoever the viewing public was at that meeting, I have no other way to clear my name except for to address it here.
Just want to remind you that the board policy is zero-one-six-seven, and it recognizes the value of public comment on educational issues. It doesn't reference public, public comment to clear your name on issues that do not have to deal with educational issues. Excuse me, excuse me, you've not been recognized to speak, sir. We have rules on public comment in our policy under zero-one-six-seven. You can review them. It gives the president the authority to recognize speakers to speak. It sets forth a time limit for speakers to speak, and it limits those comments to educational issues pertaining to the Board of Education. It's not a forum simply to speak on any issue that you may want to address. It has to be related to the Board of Ed or an educational issue. That's what our policy says.
First Amendment doesn't apply here, right? Freedom of speech doesn't apply at the Edison Board of Education. Are you getting this television? Trying to cut the people down? He can make racist remarks against people, and we're not allowed to respond? He can call people your criminals, and we can't respond?
Sir, excuse me, sir, you're not, you're not recognized to speak. If you want to speak, you can speak at the microphone.
Yes, okay, good point. This has to do, this has to do with his position as the president, speaking as the president of the Board of Education. So, he was, he was at the Committee of the Whole, speaking as the president of the Board of Education.
He was at the Committee of the Whole, speaking on behalf of the Board of Education.
He was speaking as the president of the Board of Education.
You want to comment on?
I was not speaking. At, in the capacity of Board, of Board Education President, I was at the committee, speaking as a citizen.
I don't think so. I don't. It's just not, that's just not accurate.
Do you have any comments related to the Board of Education or educational issues?
I have comments that are related to the racist flyer that was in the Board of Education elections of 2017.
So let me address that issue, and if you've come to our public comments or any public comments for Board of Ed.
I served on this board, sir.
Well, let me remind you, we do not let individuals come to the microphone and speak about their campaigns. Individuals are not allowed to advocate for a candidate when they come to the mic to speak at a Board of Ed matter. We do not allow individuals to campaign at our facilities, or on our sites. We keep the election process separate from the Board of Education, and that's a policy that we use here. And we have several candidates that come every meeting to attend, but they do not speak about their campaign, advocate for candidates, or speak about campaign issues. It's just not appropriate, it's not something that's permitted under the rules. So to speak about a campaign issue, or something that came about from the campaign, is not an issue related to an educational issue for the Board of Ed.
Where would you, where would you suggest that I be able to otherwise clear my name, sir? Based on comments that Mr. Shi had made that were taken out of context on a Facebook post?
If this is a municipal council issue, you can address it at the municipal council. Otherwise, I can't give you advice as to where you're supposed to.
I need Mr. Shi present.
Well, that's, that's a separate issue from what I'm addressing.
Well, it's an issue. It may be a separate issue from what you're addressing, but it's an issue.
You have any further comments?
I am deeply, deeply disappointed. I am deeply disappointed as a former board member. I'm in, I'm in great distress about what has happened here, and the fact that I'm pretty much being shut down, and I'm being, I'm being, I am being stifled, and that I have really little to no recourse here. So I would, I would encourage anybody to watch that meeting from October 2nd, and you can contact me again, Margot Harris, 43, Oak Hills Road, look me up. And I'm deeply, deeply disappointed, and I don't, I don't, I don't know what else to say. More than that, I'm disgusted.
Couple of questions for the board. How's the assessment made for groups that are not school, directly related to the school system, for use of the facilities? How are they, how is that assessment made? In other words, I want to run a program, I want to run a civics program in the school. I need the use of the school from 4 to 6. How do you determine how much you're going to charge me?
Any other questions?
Well, I'm going to ask my questions one at a time. Don't tell me I have to ask them all at once.
Well, look, the board president can run the meeting as he sees fit. We've asked individuals in the past to list their questions, so you have plenty of time to say them, so that you're not interrupted by our response limiting your time to speak.
Mr. Rivera, the last time you did this, you didn't answer half of the questions, and I was not allowed to re-ask those questions, which is the reason I'm asking for it to be done this way this time.
So, but, just to remind you that if the board, if the board's response somehow goes over the time limit, you will not be able to continue answering questions, otherwise you'll exceed the time limit. That's why we say, ask all your questions, we'll write them down, and then respond.
Well, I have the right to re-ask the question if it's not answered.
You have six minutes to speak.
Fine, that's the first question. The second question is, I believe Mr. Brescher told me that the number of sessions that a group uses the school system determines part of the use. If that is correct, I would like to know how that works, because I was led to believe that the more sessions you have in the school district, the less you're charged per session. If that is the case, I would like to know which group uses the school the most, and how much they actually pay each session as opposed to everyone else. I would also like to know what Mr. Shi's affiliation with the Chinese school and how that is used by the Board of Education is. I believe he was a vice principal and is on the board of that body. For starters, unless he doesn't answer them.
I mean, I can talk about that. Yeah, we actually started looking at the policy on our rentals, because the rentals are run a couple different ways. We rent out our space, depending on our students get first dibs at it, and then other organizations, depending on how many people are from Edison, to then just really, anybody in general that can rent our space, they rent by how much each room is, and then if you use it more frequently, and I forgot the number, I think it might have been like over 10, you get a 75%, and then over another 10, you get that at additional 10% or?
The first 10 weeks, if you use it on a regular basis, the first 10 weeks is 50% of our normal charges. And after the 10th week, the rest of the year, no matter how many it is, you pay 25% of whatever our, whatever our full rate is.
So the more you use it, the less you pay?
Well, but now here's where it gets really good. We rent out fields, and we rent them out for X amount of dollars. If you really want to rent our fields or something like that and get a good deal, it's better to go to the, to like the rec department, because the rec department rents them out at a, rents our fields out at a lower cost than we actually rent them out. So we're revising this whole policy, because it's just, the numbers and everything just all needs to be reviewed, and we started looking at our rental agreements that we're setting up now, in our policy committee, to rewrite that. After that gets done, then we need to establish the rates. But it's a, something that we started looking at in policy, in our policy committee. I don't think we finished it yet, did we? No.
Prior to this, though, the more you use, the less you pay, over 10?
Yes.
Okay. My second question.
Fee for facilities?
Who uses the school the most?
The fee for facilities, is that the question? We have several schools, Chinese schools, we have Hit the USA, they use it for 30 weeks during a school year. I think we have two or three that actually use it for 30 weeks.
The Chinese school.
We have two or three different Chinese schools that use it for 30 weeks, yes.
I'd like to point out that I, my husband was called a racist for putting this on a post by Mr. Shi. Thank you.
The other question is my association with the Chinese school. I was the vice principal, and I was on a board, but that was a long time ago. Thank you.
I had extensive comments I wanted to make this evening, but the board attorney and Mr. Shi are making that impossible. Apparently, Mr. Shi can attack people at will, and we're not provided with a forum to respond. So I will just read one paragraph from what I had written.
Name and address?
Donald Tar, 52 Reader Road, Edison, New Jersey. Our children are our greatest asset. With them rests the future of our community. With that sacred trust in mind, those children deserve a Board of Education made up of members they can look up to, members of high moral character, honor and integrity that they can trust and emulate, individuals with the moral compass to place those children above their own personal discomfort or ambition. Are you seeing that this evening? Are you seeing an action of morality, of integrity, of a moral compass? Is that what you're witnessing here in Edison? Or are you witnessing somebody trying to shut down comments? Comments that are being shut down by the very same person who made those comments about people assembled here this evening? Criminals, racists. But we can't respond. We can't respond.
Excuse me, sir, I'm going to remind you.
Are you getting this on television? Watch it, Edison.
Of our policy number 0164, which again recognizes and limits public comment at the board meeting on educational issues relating to the Board of Education.
This is an educational, and our children want it.
Any other public comments? Yes, Sam.
Good evening, everyone. Samuel Marshall, 11 Hilltop Road. Okay, there we go. Otherwise, I got to do this. Samuel Marshall, 11 Hilltop Road, and I was just wondering if Ms. Polkowski was still here. I just wanted to thank her again for the very informative presentation that she helped to give regarding the roaring success of our academic programs thus far, and the one question I did have in regards to the presentation given, aside from the success that I stated earlier, was I noticed that the one place where the bar graphs towards the beginning of the presentation were lowest were in terms of the achievement rates of children with special needs, they were in the teens, if memory serves me correctly. I was just wondering if those children who fall under that category were assessed using the same metric that was used to assess those of the general population of students, or whether they were given a special assessment, and that is the metric by which they were judged. I was just wondering, like, if I could get a more thorough breakdown of where those numbers came from.
There is no difference between the test that the children take that have special needs. There are accommodations that can be made, for example, large print for a test booklet, extended test time, those types of things, but it is indeed the same test.
No modifications are made to?
Well, there's a modification in that if there's an auditory processing problem, the questions can be read to the child, but it is the same test.
Okay. Thank you, I appreciate it.
You're very welcome.
Have a good night.
Thank you. Any other? Yes, Maria, now you can go.
Maria Orchid, 83, Jefferson. I'd like to invite everybody, again, Saturday, we're having, at the Clara Barton First Aid Squad, we're having a block party from 12 to 5. Education portion is the library is going to come and tell stories to the children. So please, everyone, come. We're at the Clara Barton First Aid Squad, and we'd be happy to have you. There is one condition, you have to bring a dish. It could be an appetizer, it could be like an entree, it could be a dessert, it could be Jell-O, everybody likes Jell-O. But please, everybody, come. We're just having a celebration for our community, and we'd like to see everybody there. Just to follow up, any activity with the ROTC? Question I asked the last working session. They're looking into it, but.
Yeah, I don't recall. I'll have to go back into my notes, Maria, sorry about that.
Yeah, well, I appreciate any effort, and thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any other public, yes, Steve.
Well, he did it so often. Steve Nagel, 19, Back Drive. As an alumni of the Edison education system, grades 1 through 12, and a believer in the system enough that I've lived in this town for more than 50 years, and my son is a graduate of the Edison School System, age one, from grade 1 through 12, I would implore the board to continue educating our kids, our most important asset we have in this town, the importance of religious and ethnic tolerance. After 57 years in God's good earth, I got called a racist at a meeting, and it hurts me that that was said about me, because I was brought up in an environment through our educators, that we have to consider ourselves with who people are and not what people are. And let's take this as an opportunity and turn it into a positive opportunity to teach our kids, and continue to teach our kids, the importance of equality, and how important it is that they work together in diverse community. I had a, one fight I ever won with my wife was, do we send our son to public school or private school? The fight I won was that my son exists in a global economy today, where being in a homogenous society will not help him succeed in the future. We have one of the most diverse representations in New Jersey of ethnicities in our classrooms. Let's continue to teach our kids the importance of everybody working together and focusing on their positive attributes and their assets, and let's start to work to make Edison great again. And thank you to all our board members for all the work that you do in trying to educate and, and not trying, but educating our children and making sure that they're kept on the right path for a successful future, because just remember, one day they're going to be paying all of our social security, so. Thank you for the time, Mr. President.
Thank you, yes.
Thank you, Steve. I just wanted to tell you that in every school, and I've been in almost every elementary school and two middle schools now with Wingman program, and that is what we teach, is we teach kids how to feel empathy and to be inclusive. Now, those are our two key words. And in every school that I've gone to, I ask the kids, why did you sign up for this? Why are you here? And the answer is always the same, because I want to help people, because I want to do something good, because I want to make other kids feel good. It's just remarkable. So I want everybody to know that our kids, most of them, are on the right path.
And the great thing about that is it picks up in an area that obviously someone saw a deficiency in. The one thing that I, and I, if I am out of turn saying this, I apologize, we didn't learn that in a curriculum. We didn't, we didn't learn that in something that was delivered through the system directly. It was latent learning, taught by all of our educators. And I can tell you that some of my, my son's best friends to this day are named Mohammed and Ahmad and Rajiv, and he hangs out with them all. I think it's great that he's got friends that he can go to anytime he wants, and he doesn't care who they are. And I think it's a great way to be, and I wish everybody could be that way. And thank you for the time, Mr. President.
Thank you. Anybody else?
How are you, gentlemen, ladies? Rich LaPalosa, Ellen Street, Edison. I just want to bring it up to date about, we spoke about the turf on Edison High School, where we're at up to date, and what's our timeframe look like? Mr. Brescher? You're on it, buddy. It's all you.
The turf field is, what's, Ralph? The red turf field with Gold Eagle.
Right, I know we engaged the engineer to come up with the drawings. Did he submit them to the state yet?
Monday, I think he did.
Right, after he submits it to the state, so he's probably got, at this point, probably another two weeks at least, maybe for his design, or this week, but then we have to submit it to the state, and.
I thought we did that Monday.
Submit it to the state?
Yeah.
That I can check with Ralph.
Ralph showed me something the other day, I don't know what it was.
He might have that drawing.
He showed me something, a picture, you know, it wasn't red, but.
Right, no, I mean, their drawings with their calculations.
You promised the boys for springtime, Mr. Shi, you promised the boys.
Oh, no, no.
That's our goal, that's our goal.
And also, Mr. Brescher, you know, squeaky wheel against the grease, so let's pound these guys.
Oh, no, no, that field will be done by the springtime. Our idea is really to.
From your mouth, God's, you know, ears, I'm sure.
What we're trying to do is get it in before it freezes this year.
Exactly.
That's actually the, the real idea.
Okay.
But, yeah, can we just follow up with the engineer? We might have it, we might have gotten it, maybe we did get it Monday.
I'll get a copy of it, but if Ralph got one, I'll get a copy of it.
Okay, but can you?
Ralph has it?
Ralph showed me something.
I can contact Ralph?
He showed me something the other day.
Yeah, but I don't know those were the calculations.
I don't know what it was.
Yeah, if you can just put a call over, and just give us a follow-up, okay?
Mr. Shi?
Yes.
I just wanted to bring up, I don't want to rain on your parade, but I was reading in a magazine the other day about the safety or the not safety part of the turf fields, and I brought the article into Ralph, and he was gonna, he was going to go over it because I thought he was Mr. Turf, so I, I wanted him to look through it and to rest assured that our turf fields aren't the same turf fields that they were talking about, because I'm sure I'm not the only one that read that article. So hopefully he'll get back to us and reassure my mind that our turf fields are safe, or will be safe. So hopefully, he'll get back to us and reassure my mind that ours our turf fields are safe or will be safe.
I'm sure.
Because I just think back to my daughter being a goalie diving into it, and she actually didn't like it years ago because it it ripped at her skin and then.
Soaking dirt and grass, same thing?
Yeah.
I played. I played on both.
Well, he said he would get back to me because I'm not a turf specialist, but it was scary reading that article.
No, we did. Just, you know, we did look into it because we heard about it.
Since yesterday?
No, no, no. We we heard about this prior to this. And what we're doing is, I don't want to say Woodbridge, but Woodbridge put turf fields in, and then Woodbridge changed the product in the turf fields to this safer product. So we were going with the safer product right now, you know, in our first go around. It was a little bit more money. It really wasn't that much more.
Is what they do and make it softer. That's what they do. It's tires, material ground up and put on top of the turf. When you see see the black speckles flying up, that's rubber. Those tires. I'm in a tire business. That's why I know. I've taken it to many fields. I've delivered it. Believe me, I know.
Yeah, but as in tires that made us take down all our tire parts?
No, no, no. They grind them up. They cut. They call it rubber mulch. That's what they call it. Little pebbles.
Okay.
It makes it a little softer.
I trust that we're getting a safer turf.
I can tell you, we're we're going to top of the line, so.
Yeah, it's supposed to be a cooler field, too, right? Dan's right. It's it's made up of of part of that and and another product. I don't want to call it seeds, but something that it's like cool turf or something.
Because it can't get hot on a hot day. Yeah, very hot. Like domination, if anybody knows about. It's all concrete, and it's all turf.
Okay.
Thank you.
But anyway, I'll be talking to you again, I'm sure.
Oh, we'll follow up on it.
I'm sure. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other public comments? See you now.
Good night, honey.
Motion to adjourn?
My name is Danielle. I grew up in the Edison Public School System. My daughter's in it now. She's in JP Stevens High School. I feel there's an issue on bus route JP fifteen.
Excuse me? Name it. I just.
Danielle LaBarbara, one ninety-six Westgate Drive, Edison, New Jersey. I feel there's a issue on bus route JP fifteen. There are twenty-two kids on the waiting list for that bus. There are parents who have to pay for Ubers to get their kids home, which money is one concept, and children getting in a car with a stranger is another. I feel that bus route never used to be a paid bus route when I was attending school because of the hazard of kids not even being able to walk because there is no safe crossing across Inman Avenue. It's cornered between two railroad trackings on Tingley Lane and on Inman Avenue. There's no safe crossing. There's no markings to cross. There's no lights. There's nothing for cars to yield. There's a big concrete middle divider in the middle of the road. So for kids, even if it wasn't often for them to walk, which it takes about forty-five minutes to walk from that area to the school, I don't feel is a very safe route for them to do so. On top, because it used to be unsafe, the bus used to be free. Now people pay six hundred and fifty dollars a year for it. And there's twenty-two kids on a waiting list, which fills up a half a bus. So if it's being paid for, I don't see why we can't put another bus on that route. So parents don't have to pay for Ubers, which will add up to a lot by the end of the school year. So what do we have to do to make this work?
Dan?
Yeah, you had you had the how how many kids we need to be.
On a bus to to break even?
Right now, we got five fifty students. If you got twenty-two students, you're going to have somewhere around twelve, thirteen thousand dollars, but it's about half of what we're going to be paying for that route. So we usually try to get it to forty to forty-five. We're close to its capacity if we can, so we can cover the cost because this is a strip-trip busing. It's not mandated busing.
Okay, so the bus route, the bus is already filled once. And now, well, when I went and signed up, there was twenty-two. I don't know exactly how many there is now on it. Maybe there's more than that.
I can check tomorrow and see what JP fifteen, you said, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Goes out to Westgate Square and a couple other stops behind it. That's my biggest concern because.
Yeah, can can you stay leave us your contact information so after that we'll follow up with you?
Yeah.
Okay.
Because I have flexibility in my schedule, but not every day that I can run to go pick up my daughter. And, you know, but I know neighbors and other people don't, and they're paying for Ubers, and I was completely shocked when I heard about this last week.
Understood. Yeah, we'll we'll check into it. Just leave your contact. Yeah, we'll 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 follow up on that. Okay, yes.
You are not the first person, a parent, that has made this complaint. And I've heard about the danger of the route in that the kids have to cross the train tracks. So I really want to see this resolved, and I do not want to see children getting into an Uber. That is not a good thing.
I agree. Thank you. I appreciate it.
You know, just just so you know, I I looked into this, the dangerous crossings that we had. Years ago, it was eliminated unless the the chief of police dictated that it was a dangerous crossing. So they go, I don't know what their criteria is, but but they're the ones that have to make those determinations because they're also the ones that dictate where the crossing guards are that are supposed to help the kids, you know, get across certain intersections. Because I know that there's Towne Road, there's a weird, they got to walk on one side, then they got to cross over Towne to get back onto a sidewalk to come back over again, where if you put four hundred feet of sidewalk in, the kids can all stay on one side of the street. So there's things like that that we can look into.
Yeah, there's no sidewalks on either Tingley Lane or Inman Avenue for the kids to walk, even walk over railroad crossing, which isn't even safe to begin with, so.
Yeah, I'm I'm familiar with that area.
It's also a no no horn zone now as well, so the trains are not allowed to blow the horns either anymore. So it's definitely become even more unsafe than what it was nineteen years ago when I graduated.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. I just want to have a announcement of the FDR Building. We received the the C O for that building, and we're finishing up waxing the floor and stuff. So we're hoping, is that the end of this week or the next week?
Monday.
Monday, we're going to open up this new wing to to our, you know, pre-k kids to welcome to this this new wing. You want to say something, right?
Well, yes, I I'd like to invite the public to come out. And we did two additions, one's on Woodrow and one's on FDR. And I don't know, I guess maybe it's a Saturday or a Sunday or something like that. But but we'd like the public to come out and take a look at the additions. It's a different type of construction and to get the public's input. Because in the bond referendum we have, we're basically priced at as traditional brick and mortar. If the public feels that one of these two additions seem to be acceptable, there could be some definite cost savings that we have, you know, overall for the district. But but we want to get the public's input. I mean, my input, I looked at one. I love it. I think it looks great. The other one, I'm not so happy. It's it's not my but that's a personal opinion. So we're looking to get the opinion, you know, from the public as to what direction we should head in.
Yeah, so yeah, so I think the the Woodrow Wilson's not fully completed, so we're going to hold it off on the on the on the.
Well, no, no, this is a good thing to look at now.
FDR, we it's completed. We have a siding, so we can, you know, open do an open house or something like that.
Right, but even the Woodrow, because that's your basic stripped-down version.
But it's the side is 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 not the final product.
No, but what I'm saying is, right, the other one does have the upgraded like facade on it. And and that's where I'm going. You know, if the public looks at it and they say, hey, this this stripped-down version is, you know, looks great for us. I don't. I personally don't think they will, but but the other version, I think, actually is acceptable and is a acceptable building technique, and I think the public will be happy about it.
We'll we'll arrange that. We'll arrange it with Margaret and see if we can have an open house or something like that.
All right, so motion to adjourn? Okay, Mr. Bresser, Mrs. Patel. All in favor?
Aye.
Meeting adjourned. Thank you.